I'd like to call this meeting of your January 2nd, 2018, first meeting of council this year to order. Autumn, please call and roll.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Here.
Mr. Marmee?
Present.
Mr. Rath?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Cos?
Here.
Mr. Fennell?
Here.
And Mr. Fraser?
Present.
We have all here, our presidents this evening. Welcome our two new members, Mr. Laboudis and Mr. Fennell. Congratulations. Next, we're going to start with the invocation by Mr. Blake, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Dr. I.
May bow your heads. Precious Lord, be with us, and we give you thanksgivings for the blessings that you bestowed upon our city within the last year. Thank you for all the improvements and new ideas and new construction projects that occurred in the previous year, and we wish for you to give us courage and strength and give us further guidance as the new year begins. We look to you for guidance in governing our people, governing our citizens, and in all things, we give you praise, and we thank you. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to apply from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Blake? Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's a contrary for council to discuss anything on the agenda that's pertinent tonight. Do we have any? Seeing none, next, we have our minutes of the December 18th, 2017 council meeting that you've been distributing. Is there motion to approve those?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Fraser. All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Next, for the new year, we have the proposed work city council committee assignments. As you'll see, we have each of our committees, finance, chaplain improvements, et cetera. We also have chaplains, we also have a budget review. For the president of Pro Tem, we have a majority leader, and there's one change on the minority leader. Instead of Mr. Blake, that's Mr. Cos, if you make that change. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That passes. Thank you. Next, we also have the adoption of our rules and other business of council. So, motion to adopt those?
So do we.
Motion by Mr. Fraser.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That passes. We have one appointment this evening, appointment Mayor Hall appointing Bill Cos to the City of Newark Temporary Board of Zoning Revision, District Revision. His term begins immediately to fill the term of a past member. All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have no reports from city officials tonight. Next, under Communications, we have a public hearing this evening. So, we're going to open this public hearing. Autumn, would you please read the public hearing?
There's a notice is hereby given that the Newark City Council shall take action upon ordinance number 17-43 on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018. Said ordinance is amending Article 46 MB Medium Intensity Business District, Article 64 Limited Industrial District, and Article 60 DC Downtown District of the zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio. The text or copy of the, of text of such ordinance is on file for public examination in the office of the Clerk of Council of the City of Newark at 40 West Main Street. Notice is further given that a public hearing on said ordinance shall be held before the Newark City Council during the meeting of council, which begins at 7:00 PM on January 2nd, 2018, at which time and place any interested persons may be heard.
This is your opportunity to speak on this public hearing. Do we have anything, anyone who would like to speak either for or against this public hearing?
Could you raise your voices, please?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Could you raise your voices, please?
Sure.
The mic's going to sit down.
Sure. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this public hearing, either way? Anyone else for or against? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We're going to read 17-43 for a second talk.
Ordinance 17-43 by Mr. Fraser, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance amending Article 46 MB Medium Intensity Business District, Article 64 Limited Industrial District, and Article 60 DC Downtown District of the zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard the second reading of 17-43. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Fraser?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 17-43.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Fraser.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. Is there any discussion on 17-43?
Mr. President.
Mr. Fraser?
So, if you read the notes of the planning commission and you look at their decision, there is a piece that they amended, which was making a conditional use as well as ensuring that there is a BZA review in order to make sure that, A, all surrounding parties are notified, as well as ensuring that they're in compliance with the state, as well with local regulations. And so, discussing this as well, I wanted to make sure there was not this revolving where, hey, they don't have a permit with the city, so then they can't get the zoning. And so, the way that I understand, and Mr. Rose can correct me if I'm wrong, we don't require the permit until they're given provisional act, provisional licensure from the state. And so, typically, moving forward, because the applications have already been submitted, somebody that would like to open a dispensary when they, if they ever allow for the application process to begin again, will identify a medium intensity business district that meets the 1,000-foot restriction or 700-foot restriction. Once they go through that, they go through the BZA to say, we would like conditional use, and then that is part of their application, that they then apply, and then, once they get their provisional license from the state, that it comes to the city to get their, their permit with the city. And so, that's how I envision it. Mr. Rose can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what the process looks like from end to end. And with that, there is an amendment in the packet, so I would like to make a motion to adopt 17-43A to meet the recommendations of the planning commission, and pass this on.
So, 17-43A is in your packet. You're asking to amend 17-43 to 17-43A, which encompasses the planning commission's suggestions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. Any discussion on the amendment?
Point of order.
Mr. Rath?
I believe Mr. Fraser said he made a motion to adopt 17-43A, and do we not have to amend it first?
We are amending it, yes. 17-43, we're, 17-43A, we're amending 17-43 to 17-43A. And a second on that. Anyone else? Autumn, please call and roll. We'll vote on the amendment.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
And Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
17-43.
Oh, excuse me, and Mr. Fraser.
Yes, I mean, yes.
(laughing).
Almost everybody on 17-43. 17-43A has been amended to 17-43A. What discussion do we have on 17-43 as amended? Seeing none, Autumn, please call and roll to vote.
All right. Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
And we have everyone this time. 17-43 as amended, has passed. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for comments from citizens this evening. One is now, and one is after the legislation. This is basically your opportunity to be heard. This is not a question and answer period with council. This is just your opportunity, if you'd like to let us know something. If you please put your hand up and let me know you want to speak, glad you come up and give us your name and address for the record. Is there anyone for this first section of citizens' comments? Okay. We'll move on to resolutions on the second reading, 17-94.
Resolution 17-94 by Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Fraser. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and Lincoln County Emergency Management Agency for the continued provision of emergency 911 communication services on behalf of all City of Newark safety forces.
You've heard the second reading of 17-94. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 17-94.
Motion by Mr. Rath?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion on 17-94? Seeing none, Autumn, please call and roll to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
17, 17-94 passes 10-0. Next, we have the second reading. We have 17-98.
Resolution 17-98 by Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to advertise for biz and enter into contract for certain essential supplies for various departments of the City of Newark, Ohio for 2018.
You've heard the second reading of 17-98. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 17-98.
Motion by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Cos. Is there any discussion on 17-98? Seeing none, Autumn, please call and roll to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
17-98 passes 10-0. Next, we go to 17-100.
Resolution 17-100 by Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Fraser. A resolution authorizing and directing the Mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development a one-year use of funds slash action plan along with an application for fiscal year 2018 Federal Community Development Block Grants Fund as required by 24 CFR Part 91.220 for various programs related to housing and community development.
You've heard the second reading of 17-100. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmee?
I make a motion to adopt, I wish, 17-100.
Motion by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion on 17-100? Seeing none, Autumn, please call and roll to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
17-100 passes 10-0. And finally, this evening, on the second reading, we have 17-101.
Resolution 17-101 by Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract for participation in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program for the years 2017 through 2020.
You've heard the second reading of 17-101. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 17-101.
Motion by Mr. Rath, second, second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion on 17-101? Seeing none, Autumn, please call and roll to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
17-101 passes 10-0. And that takes care of the legislation for the season. Next is the second opportunity for comments from citizens. Do we have anyone for this opportunity? Ma'am? Do we have anyone else who would like to speak?
Peggy Jones, 1115 Wilmington Court, Newark, Ohio. I know this has been a hot topic in the advocate and many citizens of Newark. I'm here to talk about the gazebo. I'm very disappointed in what took place. I'm very disappointed that it was an underhanded deal. I was not raised that way. I don't live that way, and I don't want to live in a community that does things that way. I feel that Mayor Hall has been the fall guy for this. I don't think he knew that much about it. I did my own investigating. I don't belong to any committee that was investigating. I don't know any of the people that were investigating. But I've always liked to play detective in my own little way, and I found out that there was not people that donated to have that gazebo moved. It was one person. I also found out it was a phone call made to that person, and I don't think they were told why it was being moved, other than it was in the way of construction. But I think all along, the person that wanted this done knew that it was not going to ever be put back on the courthouse grounds again. I happened to go through the courthouse lighting, which was beautiful, well-done, and enjoyed by all, and I kind of walked around to see where the gazebo had sat and why it isn't there anymore. And it's because it's a turnaround, parking spaces. I also investigated to see why, if it needed so much repair done to it, it should have been being maintained over the years that it's been on courthouse grounds. Found out that joint vocational schools would have been very happy to take on the repair of the gazebo, and with little to no expense to the city. I hear it needed a new roof. I understand that. Needed painting, it needs some things. I understand some people don't like homeless people laying in the gazebo. I'm sorry, we have no facilities in this town needed to take care of our homeless population. There is always going to be welfare people. There is always going to be mentally challenged people. There is always going to be people that have no place to go, they have no family, they're victim of hard times, or they chose to be homeless, whatever the situation is. But they need a place to go, and they need to be taken care of, and it's our obligation as citizens and residents to take care of these people. And for them to say the gazebo needed to be out of the courthouse square because people were sleeping in it, well, if you walk the streets for 12 hours, you want someplace to lay down, and there was a bench, and they're going to lay down. So, the answer to that question, put in a security camera. Now, we've got people sleeping in the garage down here every night. We have people at the Canal Market sleeping on the benches. Is this commissioner going to have all that taken away too? I'm disappointed. We always had wonderful commissioners in this town. Phil Shipley, Don Hill, Albert Ashbrook, and it just seems like, I think we have three commissioners. Am I correct? We're supposed to have. Well, we only hear from one, never hear from anybody else. And I happened to call one that I don't know very well, and he was unaware that the gazebo was going to be moved. And I think decisions like this should be made by everybody. I think the mayor should have been consulted. I think the council should have been consulted. This is, this is baloney. And I want the gazebo brought back, and, and I think, you know, if the commissioner had wanted it out of there, she'd be the one to pay to have a comeback. If you have to set it on the asphalt, turn it around, set it there, or put it on another side of the, the square. It belongs there. It belongs to the people. We paid for it. We like it. We've spent many hours down there on the square at the Rib Festival places, enjoying it. Take it away from us. Who can see it? Who's going to drive to the east end of town? Everybody's downtown, especially now, it's beautiful. You want to be down here. So, that's my, my feelings on it, and I would like for somebody to really take the bull by the horns and get this gazebo back, because everybody wants it. And, and I was happy that I was able to spend several months trying to figure out what had happened to it and why it had happened. I did smell a rat when it was first moved, when they said it was going to have to be moved because of the roundabout being put in, there might not be room, and I understood that. But I think the plan all along was to get rid of the gazebo, and I want it back if I have to drag it back myself. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone for the administration this evening? Our honorable law director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome Mr. Laboudis and Mr. Fennell. Look forward to working with you. As I remind you, that we're always available if you need help with a project or just any answer if you might need. I enjoy seeing everyone so well-dressed tonight. I look forward to all of you being as well-dressed every Monday night for the remainder of the year.[1099.21][1099.21](laughter). As Mr. Ellington will attest, sometimes there's only two of us up here with the suit on, and it'll be nice to see all of you with the suit on on Monday nights. You look great, Sean.[1109.15][1109.15](laughter). And despite my disappointment last night, I'll say it one more time, the season's over, go Tigers.[1117.23][1117.23](laughter).
Thank you, Mayor Hall.
I also will welcome our two new members on council, along with our reinstold ones that have been with us, and it's nice to see a full board up here tonight, and look forward to have a good 2018 in the city. Thank you, everybody, for serving.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Blake?
Oh, I'm first this time.[1142.61][1142.61](laughter).
Oh, okay. We kind of screwed up on the voting, but.
And take it off. Start over. I just want to welcome Mr. Laboudis and Mr. Fennell. I think it's, you'll, you'll find as you start talking with city administrators that people are willing to brace you and take you around, and if Dave Rhodes gets you in his truck, you'll be there for half a day, so just be prepared for that. I don't know if you've heard me or not, probably didn't, but that's okay.[1171.71][1171.71](laughter). But no, but welcome sincerely, and, you know, just appreciate your wanting to stand up and step up to serve in this position. Not a lot of people in our city want to serve in elected office, so it's just honorable that you have done so to represent your respective constituents. Also, want to congratulate Mr. Cos on becoming our minority leader. Carol Floyd served with distinction, and, you know, she's had that position for a long time, and looking forward to work with him and all members of council. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, and Mr. Bub.
Thank you. Just welcomed Mark and Sean, and wish you the best, and with that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Mr. Cos?
Well, I also want to welcome Mr. Fennell and, and Mr. Laboudis, and also welcome back all the other familiar faces that'll be nice to have back, and we all are hoping and looking forward to a good 2018, and working together and seeing what we can do in the best interest of this city.
That'll pass. Thank you, Mr. Cos. Mr. Fennell?
Well, thank you, everyone, for your warm wishes. I look forward to working with everybody here. If you'll indulge me for just a minute, I'd like to thank a few people that actually are in the audience this evening. My dad, Dennis Fennell. I just want to thank you for, for all of your legal work, you know, as an attorney, as a citizen DA, for showing me how important it is that we look at the law and how that everybody deserves a voice, and everybody deserves an advocate. So, thank you for that. To my grandmother, sitting next to him, Velda, your work in the forest service, you showed me an example of what a public servant is and how to serve a community for the betterment. So, thank you for that and for all of your support. My mom, Shelley Woodruff, for all of her, I guess, activism, you know, the VP of Model to Go Stunt Driving and helping make our nation safer, and showing me that if you want things to change, if you want to make a difference, that you have to step up and you have to actually put yourself out there. So, thank you to my family for all of the support and examples that you've set for me. I wouldn't be here without you. So, thank you very much for all of that. And to all the people who supported me, I really, I can't express how humbled I am by the support that I receive, and how proud I am to be up here, and how humbled I am to be here as well. I will do my best to try and make our city strong, and I know that I have some big shoes to fill. Carol was incredible. She set an amazing example, and I hope to be able to be every bit as involved and effective and dedicated as Carol Floyd. So, I just wanted to thank everyone for this opportunity, and I look forward to working with every single one of you. So, thank you very much. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you.
She wore like size 17, it seemed like, so.[1352.83][1352.83](laughter).
Big shoes, big shoes.
Mr. Fraser?
Big shoes. Uh, yeah, so, I want to make the announcement, the HHCA is doing their annual fundraiser January 13th, 4:30 to 6:30, chicken noodle dinner, silent auction, Chinese auction. It's a great fundraiser, a lot of community engagement, and I would just love to see whoever want to come, please come. The other piece is, Peggy, thank you for coming and talking and swearing in, Mr. Marmee. We appreciate it. The, the one thing that I, I want to see as well is transparency in government. So, I've always tried to, tried to advocate that, and so, what I've been working on for the last few months is a legislative tracker. And so, one of the big things that we see is, we have, I think, 98 ordinances that passed this year, and that's a, that's a lot of legislation with a lot of items. And so, what I want to see is a central repository for that, where people can access it, it's open to the public, and either council or the public can know what has passed, who's, who's supported it, and, and what, what is it contain. And so, we have a great job of having a YouTube channel in which all the videos are posted as well, and we have packets and meeting minutes and, and agendas all online as well. It's just hard for people that aren't familiar with our website to use it. And so, I think that's a step in the right direction in order to try to get more transparent and more access to the people, and, and have everybody be able to work from the same sheet of music, to see what we're looking at, and, and to understand and have access to the video and the minutes in order to have a more transparent government. So, I guess that's my New Year's resolution for next year. I want to welcome everybody on the wards for, for winning their elections and, and